Good evening. We're calling the January 14 Kildale Hills Board of Commissioners meeting to order. If you would all join me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. Before we enter our moment of silence, I just would like to start off by saying, in light of the recent fire at Seven Seas just last week, I just want to kind of give a special thanks to Chief Tilly and the Fire Department for their exceptional service with that fire, and also a thank you to the other neighboring fire departments that came in and also supported our response to that fire, and certainly our Police Department as well. It apparently came quite a spectator activity that night, and it took our law enforcement to try to keep everybody safe and back far enough away. So, thank you all for what you did for our citizens and our community. And with that, I'll call for a moment of silence, please. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for this meeting with the removal of new business item number one, requested amendment to Chapter 153 zoning section 153-207A, L1-2 zoning conditional uses to add detached single-family structure and associated conditions to the workforce housing ordinance. Schedule public hearing as requested by the applicant.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As we move into our public hearings, obviously you see we're a smaller group this evening. We knew back when Commissioner Pitt was sworn in in December that he had a prior commitment before agreeing to serve that would keep him away in January and February from our meetings, and we knew that going into this. But as soon as he received the packet last Wednesday, he went through item by item and provided us with his input on each item that we'll share as we go into each item tonight. So, we certainly appreciate his service, and even though he is out of town, as I said, this was something he and his family had planned long before the seat became available and we asked him to serve. But he is committed to this and stays in communication and provides his input on a regular basis. So, also, we received word this evening Commissioner Buskey is not able to be here because of a medical issue. So, with that, we will move into our public hearings. The first public hearing we have this evening is item number one, resolution of intent to consider permanently closing and abandoning a portion of Atlantic Street. With this, this is the time set aside for those individuals who want to speak specifically on this public hearing to come approach the lectern, identify, excuse me, identify themselves by name and address, and this is specific to this public hearing. We did have two individuals that signed up to speak at this public hearing, so I will call them first, and then after they speak, if anyone else is interested, they can speak. When you're speaking tonight during a public hearing, if you're speaking as an individual, we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, we ask you to limit your comments to five minutes. So, the first individual that signed up to speak this evening for this public comment is Mr. Delbert Moulton.
No.
Melton?
No.
Is that correct?
No.
Okay. If you'll approach the lectern and identify yourself again, state your name and address, please.
Okay. I'm Delbert Melton, and I live at 1208 Swan, formerly West Atlantic Street, and my main thing that I wanted to bring up tonight was I was just curious as to when will this square footage be added back to my land when they permanently close that street? I'd want to know, because my land is 25 foot, half of the 50-foot right-of-way that used to be there, and it's 180 feet long, and that's over 4,000 square feet that will be added to my property once again, and I'd like to know from Greg or Donna or whoever when that can be made official so that I can get my new survey made for my new house. I need that put on my survey before I have the new house considered, because that way I have over 20,000 square feet then, whereas now I'm at 19.6. With that additional 25 feet by 180, that puts me over 20,000 square feet, which puts me in different criteria as to what I can and build there. So, I would just like to know when that'll be official, and thank you for finally bringing this up, because it's been a bone of contention for a long time between all of us, and I really don't have enough money to move the telephone pole and do all those kinds of things. So, I'm just going to turn my house a different direction so it faces the same as all the other houses, and when I build a new house, I'd just like to know when I can get that square footage added. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual that signed up to speak at this public hearing is Mr. Bobby Turner.
Good evening. Yeah, I'd like to say thank you for when they did away with the Atlantic Street, which originally wasn't ever supposed to be there. I have a letter here that I submitted like three years ago, if you would like to have a copy to the mayor. Should I bring it to you?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
What it was, when they did away with the street, it was all great. They finally did away with the street that never should have been there in the first place. Greg's very familiar with it. The wires are still there, you know, and they're not that high. So, if I want to build another establishment there one day in the next few years, the power company, I would like to get maybe y'all to get the power company, Dominion Power, to remove. The power lines are still going through the middle of the property, you know, so, man, I think it's still 35 feet restricted, I guess, for a normal height of building, but the power lines are still going through the middle of the property where the street originally was. It just evolved back there 30 years ago. I'm sure y'all are familiar with it, and they finally corrected the wrong by giving us the street back, but the power lines are still there. So, I mean, other than that, that's about it. So, I'm just trying to get the power lines removed so it's free and clear property. That is it.
Okay.
Any questions?
Dominion Power paid for it. Thanks for the help there, but they don't have an easement, they never have had an easement there. So, you know, and they acknowledged that when I met them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak at this public hearing? Okay, we will close this public hearing and open the floor for discussion. Greg, would you like to provide an introduction and then?
Sure. Since Mr. Turner and Mr. Melton have so eloquently put it, I do know a little bit about it, because it's been going on for years and years. Basically what you have, I'll put a map up to help explain it here, is this area in red is an area where I'd say it was the historic way back to Old Nags Head Woods, and somehow along the line, it became paved, and I think the town might have provided the funding for the pavement. And then eventually some neighbor who I don't see here tonight said, "Well, you can't repave that road because it's my land." And the attorney at the time looked at it and said, "Well, maybe we won't repave it." And then it fell into disrepair, and eventually another developer came in and paved the railroads back there, and we pulled up the pavement and the waterline, and now what you have left is this area that was really, land was platted over, and it needs to go back to the adjoining property owners, and that's what this public hearing was for, and that's what this action of the board, if they choose to do so tonight, will do, is take that area in red and split it equally to the adjacent property owners.
I brought a big close-up if they want to see it up there at the Gassett Club.
Well, and as far as to answer Mr. Melton's question, that would have to do with the amount of time it takes to get to the courthouse and record the action of the board tonight. So, there's two things that take the board's action and then a document that would go and be recorded, as I understand. And a week or two?
Probably. That's about right.
Is there any guidance or information you could provide in response to Mr. Turner's question, or is that something we need to look into, or what's, do you know enough about that at this time?
Actually, we met with Michael Thompson, Jay Tutwaller, and I think Bobby and another neighbor were in Maryland. There was a crew outside there looking at this problem, and what the response is, I recall, it's been a year or two ago, was that they went back and looked at it and they said, "Well, you know, yes, true, we don't have an easement, but there's the prescription of it being there for all this time gives us the right to leave it there," and they weren't willing to, at that time, willing to cooperate with the property owners to remove it. And what Mr. Turner says is exactly right. It does, you know, if it cuts through the middle of your property, it kind of hampers you building a house. And right now, there sits an older mobile home on that lot, and it kind of really does restrict what can go on there. So, I really understand the point that both Mr. Melton are talking about and Mr. Turner in citing a home, you know, by today's rules on those lots with the power line going through there, but it's a question of who pays for moving, and they'd be happy to pay to move it if, you know, I don't know the numbers that they quoted, but it's quite expensive to move that power line and relocate the poles and transformers and everything else that goes along with that project.
Is that something that we could make an effort through the legal process to get, have them pay for moving it under the circumstances?
That's something you need to talk to Mr. Michael about. I think, you know, maybe bringing it up and talking to him about, you know, a community project or something along those lines, he might have more success.
You want an answer?
If you got one.
Assuming the board approves this, that'll be an action between the private owners of the property and the power company to get that arranged. The town didn't arrange to put the power lines there. The town didn't give anybody easements to put the power lines there. As a matter of fact, I think most of it was already there when the town came into existence, and it would be up to the private property owners to somehow get the power company to move those lines. And they'll have to talk to, if they can't come to some agreement like Greg was talking about, then they'll need to talk to an attorney about what they might be able to do. Is that something that we could be involved in, and just in the sense of, I don't know what you might call it, sometimes they call it a friend of the court brief or something, or to say that, you know, we agree with what these people want to do even though we're not responsible, or? Well, certainly you can say that, what impact that will have is. True.
Well, and I would be happy to start the conversation by reaching out to Michael Thompson and letting him know, well, let's, assuming this passes, letting him know that this passes and now what's going to happen, that this street is going to be officially abandoned and now that the portions will be equally allocated to the homeowners, sharing that information with them and letting him know that these concerns were raised tonight and that I'll get his input and we can share it back with you two. I'm sure your neighbors will be interested parties as well and just kind of feel out the conversation and see how it goes. Let's continue on with the, our discussion, but assuming that this has passed, I will do that within the next couple of days, reach out to Michael Thompson. Any discussion or questions on the, what's before us?
Is there any more work that actually needs to be done as far as pulling up of the road? I mean, is that, that's complete?
All the infrastructure's been removed except for the power lines, which, as Mr. Michael said, is to me and North Carolina powers responsibility.
And they quoted me $6,000 just to move the pole over six feet, the existing pole, put in a new pole and move the lines over six feet. So, I just relocated my house direction a different way when I get it built, because I can't afford that. Hey, when we were out there that day, see, careful.
Well, we actually are spaced, as a board, now move through this agenda item, and so technically the public hearing's closed as far as the back and forth with the audience. There'll be a time set aside in just a few more minutes for public comment, though, if you want to come back up and address it, but at this point, it's really the discussion, that's okay, between the board members and staff. Any other questions or clarifications, information you all need?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. If not, is anyone ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the attached order permanently closing a portion of Atlantic Street with authorization for Mayor Davis to execute the order.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Next up this evening is the second public hearing. That is item number two under public hearing, requested amendment to Chapter 153 zoning, Section 153.076 parking, to define and establish parking requirements for warehouse industrial complex, and Section 153.226 light industrial zone to add warehouse industrial complex to permitted uses. We did not have anyone sign up to speak at this public hearing, but is there anyone in the audience that wishes to do so? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And Greg, may I call on you again?
Well, I think I'm going to let my able-bodied, this is the mayor of guns tackle this one, because she did such a great job at the planning board and at her last meeting.
Thank you, Meredith.
With that, I'll probably. The amendment adds a definition for warehouse industrial complexes. That's the first part, and that is probably the main part of this ordinance amendment. The warehouse industrial complex has to be at least 50,000 square feet on one site and one, under one management group. It is, at least 60% of the enclosed floor area must be used for warehousing, or it won't be considered a industrial complex. The, and associated offices, the associated offices is limited to 15% to be counted as part of the industrial, as part of the warehouse. If it is the industrial warehouse, it is 1 to 600 for parking. Regular warehouse is 1 to 400. So, that 15% office and the warehouse space is parked at 1 to 600. Any additional office space over the 15% or other uses that are permitted in the light industrial zone would be parked at 1 to 400. Again, this is for larger industrial complexes where you can overpark for warehousing, and we're trying to minimize the amount of coverage we have and also allow for people to move in and out of each unit without having a major change of use from, through the planning department, so that they can do their incubator group businesses and then move on to the commercial zone if they need to. So, that is the intent, and I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Okay. Open the board, or the floor, for questions, discussion?
I don't have anything on this one.
I don't either.
Randy?
Either of you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request to amend Chapter 153 zoning, Section 153.076 parking, to define and establish parking requirements for warehouse industrial complex and Section 153 dot 226 light industrial zone to add warehouse industrial complex to permitted uses. The Board of Commissioners find that this proposed amendment to Chapter 153 is in the public interest, it is reasonable and in the public interest because it provides more appropriate parking calculations for a warehouse and industrial complex.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Excuse me, any further discussion? The only point that I will bring up is that this, when it went before the planning board was approved, had a five, a vote, five in favor. Yeah, none opposed, basically. So, okay. All those in favor of the motion, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Meredith.
Next on our agenda is the time set aside for public comment. This now is the time set aside for comments on any item, whether it's been discussed or hasn't been discussed. We also had a sign-up sheet for the public comment time. We had one individual sign up, and the same parameters apply for public comment. If you're speaking as an individual, we ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, we ask you to limit those comments to five minutes. Ms. Tate signed up, so you would be first this evening, and then we'll call on anyone else that's interested in speaking. If you'll, yes, ma'am, if you'll go to the lectern there and just identify yourself by name and address, please.
My name is Mary Tate, and my husband and I have owned a summer home on 803 West Durham Street for in excess of 20 years. We have been very concerned in the last two to three years because we've been spending a lot more time here at the beach with the drug activity that's going on in our area. We were not very happy. We went home for Christmas up in Virginia, and on November 30th, we were still here. And from what I understand, there was a drug-growing operation three blocks from our home that they, the police came in on November 30th. The only time that I found out about it, or any of my neighbors found out about this, was through Norfolk News and on January 2nd or 3rd. I have kept, I walk a lot, and I, I keep an eye on what's going on in that Avalon Beach neighborhood, and I've told the police this, many, many, many times. Anytime that I see one out on the streets in our Avalon Beach area, I usually stop and say, "Okay, see that house down there?" That's it. And they always say, "Yes, we know." I just want to know what can we as citizens do along with the police to make sure that we get rid of these people that are selling drugs in that neighborhood? And they are there. You see it all the time. It's worse in the summer, of course, than it is in the winter, but, and I'm sure my three minutes is up and I've been rambling on, but I just, we need answers. We need, what can we do?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just so you know, what we'll do is see if anyone else wants to speak, and then we'll do response to public comment. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak at public comment? Anyone else? Okay. We'll close public comment, and Ms. Tate, I know you had sent an email about this very same thing, and certainly appreciate you coming to talk this evening. I know we have both our police chief and our deputy police chief here, our assistant police chief. Chief, would you like to say a few words this evening?
Actually, both of them also called me.
Okay.
And we have talked about it also, which is very, was wonderful.
Okay. Well, it's nice for him to be able to, because, you know, certainly we have people at home listening and dialing in later through the Internet, so.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
I have spoken to Ms. Tate, and Sergeant Henderson has also spoken with her. I certainly understand her concerns. We are working with all of our resources to, to address the drug situation around, in and around Kildale Hills and Derrick County. We're currently working with the Sheriff's Department in a joint narcotics task force. You know, I think part of Ms. Tate's concerns was that she wasn't notified in an amount of time that she thought was reasonable, and that was because the investigation was going, it was ongoing. It was an ongoing investigation, and the house that was actually part of the grow operation wasn't targeted. Our officers were simply in the neighborhood looking for a B and E suspect and came across it early in the morning, and so that's, that's how it happened. And a lot of times, we try to get all the players involved, so the information isn't out there as quick as some may like, so that we can get all the players involved, and it's, it's a whole network of things, so, but we're definitely working on it, so. Do you have any questions?
Well, and I'll add just a couple of things that I know have been happening as well. Certainly through presentations and some awareness that our Police Department has taken the lead in as far as putting on gang awareness presentations, and unfortunately, but it's true, there's such a strong connection between gang activity and drug activity as well, because of the content and the nature of the content, we're not filming those and putting it out there on TV, because we also don't want to educate in the wrong way some of, you know, some of the information that they're sharing in this. But those are really powerful and informative sessions that they've been holding, where they do really try to teach community people about ideas, what they can see to recognize activity, and then help report that by calling that in. So, I'm sure we'll be scheduling, you know, others in the future. I think we've done three or four of those here. And then in addition to that, obviously, I wish that we could put things out immediately, but in light of investigations and time that needs to be built in, there's sometimes a delay in notification. But I also wanted to share, in case you're not on the listservs that the town puts out, I know we put out a crime blotter that at the appropriate time when we can release information, we do in that crime blotter, and it's an email distribution list. So, if you're not on that, or if anyone else that's here, if you're not on that, share your email address, if you don't mind, with Mary, and that way you can be informed as soon as the public's informed on those items. And they, the crime blotter, I'm always very interested to read it, because it will say what things have happened, but also where the police are in the investigation, what they can report on. So, that's a great way to stay informed. Those are just some comments that I had off the top of my head. Anything else you guys want to?
Yeah, and I will add, as far as some of the things that are being done with drugs within the county that Kildale Hills is involved in as well, Derrick Casa is a group that's also very much so involved, and it takes place in this room. And I was just talking with the chief about it as I walked in, he was here as well, and that's a group that's very much so involved in the preventative aspect of it. So, there are lots of things going on within the county and the different towns to do all different kinds of things, not just, not just on the side after things have happened and people have done the bad things that they're doing, we're also trying to prevent things from happening as well, so, and that's something that the town is involved in as well.
And we also, and I share with Ms. Tate, we also have a bicycle patrol that we, that we're, you know, trying to do more of as we have a math hour to do. Myself and Officer McDowell rode a few hours on Friday, so, you know, we are out there and we're, you know, we're trying, so, and I hope Ms. Tate and Mr. Tate will, you know, keep their house on Durham Street and stay with us for a while.
And I, without a doubt, certainly know it's scary and, you know, concerning, and so the information sharing back with you tonight isn't in any way to be dismissive, it's to recognize that it is an issue, and I think our, I know our Police Department recognizes that, and just trying to share some of the initiatives that are out there. You know, I think the best way You know, I think the best way to tackle this, in addition to all the things that we have, is just to be vigilant, and as soon as you see anything, call it in, and also to your neighbors. And it sounds like you have been, but the, the more, too, that we get people calling and reporting.
May I just, may I just say one thing? Where's the phone, you know, what, where's the phone number that we call?
Nine one one. You can call nine one one to, to report it. There's also a non-emergency number.
Do I have to give my name and my address and all of that?
If, if you're calling nine one one, yes, well, but that's the way that they really can respond, so.
Well, I don't want to give my address, but, go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay, and we can talk later or afterwards as well as the police.
Yeah, I want to have a separate meeting.
Okay, sounds great. Okay, we will move on to new business this evening. And as you recall, when we approved the agenda, we removed item number one at the applicant's request. So we're moving into, it's listed as item number two, but consideration of potential representation on the Transportation Advisory Committee. Open the floor for discussion.
Brand, if you'd like to relate your association with that issue, that might help us out.
Yes, I relate to the mayor and the mayor, Prutiam, that I am actually the chair of the Dare County Transportation Advisory Board, and that I would, and I currently work with the RPO that is a member of the Almarl Commission now. So I would not mind being the representative that is, is mentioned here. As, I'm not, I'm not currently attending these meetings, but since I already have a relationship with the RPO and I'm already working with them, it would probably make sense for me to do that.
I think that's good, it would help, help us, because otherwise we'd have a learning curve to get there. Yeah, I think, I think it'd help out a lot, yeah.
And I know, was re-referencing Commissioner Pitt's email, where he suggested either you or I serve, but I don't think he was aware of your.
He probably was not.
Relationship with them.
Absolutely not.
Okay. I certainly would support you representing us on that committee. Is that something we need a, a motion for?
Yes, ma'am, but that actually can be done with the other appointment also, for the other part of that. Commissioner Rubotum would be on the, the TAC, and then would like to recommend Greg Loy for the TCC. Greg is currently attending these meetings, both in his capacity as the planner, planning director, and also with his role with the bicycle or pet group, bicycle group. So if you, if you'd like, you could do that as one motion.
Okay, that's a great idea.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion then, that we reappoint the planning director Greg Loy to the Transportation Advisory Committee, which is part of the Almarl, Royal Transportation Advisory Committee, and also recommend that we appoint Commissioner Rubotum as the, uh, uh, transportation, to the Transportation Advisory Committee. Did I say that right? Or did I get it wrong?
Just, just for clarification, it would, it would be Commissioner Rubotum to the TAC.
TAC, right.
And Greg Loy to the TCC.
TCC.
It's very confusing.
Whatever they should be on.
The Technical Coordinating Committee for Greg, and the Transportation Advisory Committee for Brandy.
Too many initials.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, I would second that motion. Any, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Moving on to new business, item number three. Since new business item number three, which is the proposed text amendment to Chapter fifty-one, Water Services, Section fifty-one dot ten irrigation meters, to mirror the requirements of adopted state law. Since this new business item is making its first appearance before the Board of Commissioners, and since ordinances on their first appearance require at least a four-person majority, we obviously cannot take action this evening, because we're only three people. So I would like to make a motion that we move this item, or defer this item to the February eleventh, two thousand and thirteen, meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? For clarification, Steve, now that we're moving it to February eleventh, in the unfortunate circumstance that we're a three-member board again that evening, could we take action, though?
You can.
Because that would appear, that would then be the second time.
That's correct.
Okay, everyone follows. Hopefully that will not be the case, but we, as I indicated earlier, we know for Commissioner Pitt that he won't be back with us until March, so, okay. So the motion and seconds on the floor, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So, moving to Commissioner's agenda. Mayor Prutiam Hogan?
Yeah, I'd like to mirror the mayor's comments from earlier regarding the, the fire over at Seven Seas condominium. So I was over there that evening for a while, and I was pretty impressed with what was going on. I didn't get too close, there was a lot of people around there, and I didn't want to get in the way, but I saw, I was impressed by the number of responders I saw from so many different locations, Southern Shores, Nag's Head, Forest Service was there because of watching out for the sparks causing fires along the dunes and such. And I went, went there in the morning, the morning after, and the chief was there, and I, Chief Tilly was there, and him and I walked around for a while and talked about what they had done. And it's, it's amazing, if you can, if you're, if you've ever looked over there and see how close the adjoining properties are to the north and south, it's almost unbelievable that it didn't spread. The wind was, what, wind there was, was directly from the east, so it didn't go either way, but they were constantly hosing down both the houses on either side, and I was just totally impressed. I was also impressed, I guess you could say, by the devastation. There wasn't, there was one little piece of wall standing maybe twelve or fifteen feet high, but everything else, it was just totally leveled, and the amount of destruction there was, uh, I, I don't even want to think about what would happen if it happened in the summer. But again, I'd like to commend everybody, chief and all his staff, and the police department, and all the other responders that came from all the neighboring communities. The other thing I want to bring up, we want to set some dates for the meetings for these committees, is that correct? You want to do that now?
The new committee meetings have officially been set. But certainly we could announce.
Yeah, I want to, that's what I want to tell everybody. The two new committees that we have, the Community Appearance Committee and the Bomb Trax Study Committee, each will be having their first meetings later this month. The Bomb Trax Site Committee will be meeting on Monday, the twenty-eighth, and Debbie, is it thirty-first or thirty-first?
Thirty-first.
Uh, thirty-first.
Okay, I had the thirtieth here, okay. And the Community Appearance Committee will be meeting on the thirty-first of this month. And at that time, they'll discuss their own meeting schedule. It, it, it isn't necessarily going to be monthly, it, it may be, but that'll be up to the committee once they're, once they have their first meeting. So if anybody is interested in what's going on there, please come and attend those meetings, because those are pretty interesting subjects, I think, both of them.
Thank you. And those meetings, both are starting at five-thirty.
Yes, five-thirty.
Okay, thank you.
I will say ditto to what Mike said. I, I had talked with the fire chief as well, and while I did not actually go to the site, I have a young child who would have loved to be close to it, as we were driving down the road and could see the flames over on the bypass. She was wanting to go over there badly and be in the middle of all that mayhem. We said no, we were in a soft-top vehicle. So my husband said absolutely not. He was going to turn west and go as far as he could possibly go. But as we were walking the next morning, you could see the, the cinders, that some of the pieces were this big on West First Street. So I still stand amazed, as I was telling you earlier, that, that, that it did not spread. So again, kudos to the fire department and to all of the, the departments that, that responded, and to the police department that kept, kept the people at bay, because I know it was a, it was a, um, it was a big occurrence in a, in a small place with a lot of people. I, I had, I had called Sheila to find out what was going on, because it was, I was worried about people's safety at that point when something's that big. So again, a, a job well done to keep everyone safe and to keep it from spreading, so. And that's all I have.
Yeah, one of the reasons why I didn't get very close, is I had our eleven-year-old granddaughter with me, so. Yeah, it was, yeah, I didn't get close at all, so.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the mayor's agenda. Start out with, there's a few resolutions this evening on, under my agenda. The first resolution is in support of North Carolina Coastal Caucus. And this resolution supports the concept of forming a special caucus in the General Assembly that will keep abreast on unique coastal issues such as stormwater rules, cost of homeowner insurance on the coast, beach nourishment, inlet dredging, so on and so forth. So this is just a resolution in support of formation of that caucus. And either of you like to make a motion for that, or?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, I know Commissioner Pitt provided that he was in support of this resolution, so. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the next resolution is requesting state legislation to clarify municipal authority on the state's ocean beaches. And this has kind of been out there a little bit, and I know Nag's Head has addressed this before, Kitty Hawk has addressed this. And Steve, could I call on you to kind of just, in layman's terms, if you can, explain what this?
Well, the, the result of the Supreme Court ruling in the Cherry case, which is the Nag's Head case, basically raises the issue of whether the towns can enforce anything in the public trust area. Cherry case was about trying to remove these houses from the public trust area that were blocking people from going up and down and where it couldn't be used. And the court has held that only the state of North Carolina can enforce those rights. Towns don't have that ability. So we're going to move to try and get some legislation to clarify whether or not towns could act concurrently, at least with the state, to enforce the regulations out there. Of course, certainly, it doesn't seem to be too interested in assuming that response is going to be, but right now, it's biggest.
Okay. So this resolution supports the legislation that's proposed in the two thousand and thirteen General Assembly to clarify the municipality's role in this, so. To kind of divide it up, I'll make a motion that we approve this resolution.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Just add Commissioner Pitt, Commissioner Pitt confirms support of this resolution as well. So all those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The third resolution this evening is the resolution opposing legislation that provides for the forced taking of municipal water system. This resolution comes from the city of Asheville through the League of Municipalities. And the League of Municipalities and its membership opposes all efforts by the General Assembly to force any given municipality to transfer existing assets of the, of the municipality to another entity, or to restrict or eliminate the ability of the municipality to operate an enterprise in the manner which locally elected officials determine would benefit its stakeholders. So to kind of put that in, basically, it's, it's opposing legislation that would take away the local municipality's ability to regulate the enterprise activity that's in the local area. So Steve, anything that you want to add to that?
This one came out of, I'm not quite sure what the purpose of it is.
Well, you would, I mean, you would think in reading it, it should be common sense, and that that right should be there, but I guess in something that the city of Asheville is battling, their right to do that is being threatened, so which has prompted the league to get engaged in this on their behalf, so.
Yeah, I don't understand why the General Assembly would consider such legislation. It doesn't make any, any sense to me. So I'm, I'm in favor of the resolution opposing the legislation. And if you'd like, I'd make that a motion.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? I'm trying to remember, was this the one Commissioner Pitt had some questions on this one, but I believe they were addressed.
I think he was on the same page as I.
I think his questions were on the one that was deferred, and they were addressed.
Yes, okay.
Okay, all right. So all those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the last resolution this evening is a resolution calling for immediate funding for the dredging of Oregon Inlet. And this is a proclamation, similar one that was put forth and adopted by the Dare County Board of Commissioners on January seventh, calling for this immediate funding to support the dredging. And any discussion?
No, this one's kind of a no-brainer, I think. I definitely think we need to support this.
I agree.
I'll make a motion then, that we support this resolution.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Two other things that I wanted to, or actually just one other thing I wanted to bring up this evening. Some of you may recall at our last meeting, which was in December, during public comment, we had three gentlemen that stood up and spoke about the firing range and the noise concerns from the, the range that's out, and it's in Nag's Head, but the sound travels, travels, and the three gentlemen that spoke all lived in the Ocean Acres area, Mr. Ben Murray, Matt Byrne, and Greg Brown. And at that meeting, we suggested that we would reach out to Nag's Head and, and share with them the citizen concerns that were brought forward, and ask for their consideration of maybe restricting the hours of usage of, of that. And I'm pleased to, to say that we had, I think, a wonderful response from the town of Nag's Head, and they immediately took action. We received an email on December thirteenth, and I'm trying to remember, was our meeting on the tenth? So it was like three days later. We received an email that said effective today. We are asking, and this is from Tom Gilliam, the Deputy, Deputy Chief of Police in Nag's Head, that effective today, we are asking that all agencies adhere to specific times when utilizing this firearms range. During the fall, winter, and spring months, other than daylight savings times, please limit all range use to the maximum time of twenty-one hundred hours. During daylight savings time, the range could be used until twenty-two hundred hours. It went on just with a couple of other, other comments in there. But I just thought that that was tremendous response to our request and working together. So we did acknowledge that and sent a letter back to Nag's Head thanking them. But I just wanted to share, in case anyone had not followed some of that paper trail, just great neighbors that we have there in Nag's Head and their responsiveness, so. And with that, that's all I have on my agenda. Next is the town manager's agenda.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Town attorney's agenda?
Nothing, please.
Okay, consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Four items on the consent agenda. The first is the minutes from the December tenth, two thousand and twelve. The annual certification of firefighters is the second. Number three is two budget amendments, one for body armor grant, and the second to record the PEG channel support funds. And lastly, the fourth is the adoption of the two thousand and seven water, local water supply plan with updates through two thousand and twelve. And this evening, staff would recommend approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll second that.
And the only discussion on here, Debbie, on item, it says through 2011, is it 2011 or 2012?
I think what we actually received approval for was 2011.
Okay, okay.
Hopefully 2012 will come sooner than September 11th.
That's right. Takes a little while to get that information, I guess. Okay, any other discussion? And Commissioner Pitt expressed his support of all items on the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
Certainly. Now on the agenda, this is the second time that's set aside this evening for public comment. If there's anyone that would like to address the board at this point, please encourage you to raise your hand and we'll call on you and you can go to the lectern. Yes, Mr. Lowak?
Mike Lowak, 106 Port Hole Court. Basically, it's more of a question, because as I look out over the audience, I see at least six or more people that have been to every meeting over the past 18 months. And my question is, although I'm not in favor of, you know, kicking a man when he's down, what are the rules or how does it handle, you know, because Paul Buskey has been missing from the majority of these meetings the past 18 months, and tonight is just another example how his absence has kept the board from, you know, doing what they need to do as far as their jobs are concerned. And I guess my question is, do we have to wait until November and elect him out or fail to reelect him? Or is there any measures that can be taken, you know, so the board can function with a quorum on the nights? Because I see everybody else making an effort to be here, and I understand Paul does have some medical issues, but still, there has to be a point where we say, you know, let's do something, let's put somebody else in that chair that will actually want to be here and do the job that they're elected to or assigned to. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Yes, sir.
Just one thing, all that, back to the Atlantic Street thing. I believe I heard the town attorney say he thought those, I could be wrong. He said he thought those wires were there since the town was, I think, incorporated, which I think it was incorporated, if I'm not wrong, in 1953. Those wires weren't there in 1953. They were put there in like '73 or '74 when they asphalted the dirt path, then it became graded clay road, then they asphalted, said, okay, it's a road. Well, we all know that now, it's been corrected. But those wires weren't there until they asphalted it, or maybe a year or two when it was just a clay graded road. But they weren't there since, I think the town was incorporated '53, they weren't there since then, in answer to your question, if I got that straight. But they ain't been there that long. They've been there long enough, don't get me wrong, but they weren't there in '52. Because I had two properties there, and you said something about reference to the neighbors. I own 1205 and 1207, other than Delbert, there's two other fellows, two other people that this would involve in, where the Atlantic Street wires would be removed. So it's only a total of, well, five, but I'm two and he's one, and the other two people, they probably don't know nothing about it, but anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak at public comment?
The only other thing I had to add is if you needed to look at the actual map, I went and, went to Staples today and had them reprint me a survey. Copy of my survey that shows the road we're talking about and the split between the two that gives us back the properties officially, if you wanted to look at that, I brought it for you. And just if I could get Greg and Donna or Meredith, either one, soon as this does come to fruition with y'all getting it to be finalized, that they get in touch with me so I'll know when I can go ahead and get up with my surveyor about making a new survey, adding on this addition to this property, because then that allows me to go ahead and get my permits and all set up for my new house. So the sooner the better, and they can get in touch with me through the mail, they've got my address, and soon as they can let me know, then all the better. Can I bring this up and show it to you?
If you want to leave it with Mary, we did receive that in our packet as well.
Oh, okay, you've got a copy of that?
Yes, sir, but thank you.
Well, that's an extra $2 I didn't need.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening that would like to speak at public comment?
Okay, we'll move to response to public comment. I guess first was Mr. Lowak's comment. Steve, any input or guidance you can provide or response?
There really is no procedure for removing someone from office in these circumstances. It's just something that should not have been addressed by the general statutes.
Yeah, it was always my understanding that an elected official could only be removed by the electorate, is that correct?
So, I guess my comment to that is, in case he doesn't watch the meetings, I will share your comment with him and let him know what you've expressed here this evening. But other than that, I guess the other answer to your question is, it's an election time thing. Okay, and then the other two comments, thank you for your comment, and Delbert, I think that's appropriate, we can let you know once we know that it's been processed, but it may take up to two weeks or so for that to happen through the court.
That's fine.
Okay.
Just in some way that I can know, so I'm trying to get all my ducks in a row and this will help.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else this evening? All right, well, I guess we just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Thank y'all for coming.
All in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you, thanks for being here.
Thank you, everybody.